Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to order. I'd like to make a reminder on a couple items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence all your electronics devices. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight, and appreciate you joining us. In an effort to have enough time to hear from the audience members, we ask that, when you come to the podium, please state your name, address, for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes to allow us to hear everyone who would like to speak. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Denise, please read the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 1, approval of minutes. 1A, Planning Commission briefing of Tuesday, June 4, 2019. Item 1B, Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 5, 2019. Item 2A, petition, 10360, 2019, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District located near 57th Street and Old Yankton Trail. Item 2B, petition, 10486, 2019, rezone from the CN Conservation District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District near 61st and Seville Place. Item 2C, petition, 10493, 2019, rezone from the O Office District, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, and C3 Commercial Community District to LW Live Work District and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District near East 18th Street and Veterans Parkway. Item 2D, petition, 10497, 2019, rezone from the CN Conservation District to the I1 Light Industrial District located east of I229 and north of East Rice Street. Item 3, Consent Agenda Approval.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself for voting on consent.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address any of these items? Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, question for Jason, if I could grab you up real quick. Question on 2D there. Sorry I didn't catch this earlier, but taking a look at the industrial there, that essentially abuts the big Sioux River on the north side. Kind of took a look around, you know, remainder of the city and kind of even some of the neighboring parcels, and I see that there's generally a buffer left there for conservation, you know, that touches the river. I kind of read something on this item as far as that north portion will not be developed because we might be in the floodplain there. Can you kind of further opine on that and kind of let us know what's going on in the north portion of that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll probably defer to Albert. I know he's worked extensively on this specific case and kind of is one of our floodplain administrators.
Sure.
Albert Schmidt, Planning Office. So, yeah, with this one, the development plans aren't fully out there yet, but long-term, they're looking at trying to make this work with the city. So, on the north side there, there's floodway, floodplain going on. Well, the whole side is floodplain, but floodway, which is the high-velocity water area during a flood event, is way more restrictive. And there's also easement areas on the north side there. So, the theory here is that they'll work with the city on trying to actually get some of that land over to the city potentially for our greenway system to continue on that area. But at this point in time, they didn't have that level of information hammered down yet, so they just want to proceed forward with the whole one at this point, and then figure out those details, and then we can rezone that back to CN whenever that becomes finalized.
Okay. Are you okay with that one?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. With no objections, I'll look for a motion for approval.
Move to approve. Shaun Irvin.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. The consent agenda has been approved. If you're here for one of those items, feel free to leave. Thank you.
Item 4, Regular Agenda Approval.
We will now hear, we'll move on to regular agenda. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve. Nyberg.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Denise, can you please read the first item on the regular agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 5A, petition, 9847, 2019, rezone a portion from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forums located at 3209 North Wayland Avenue.
Excellent. So, this is one owner. An applicant is DND Enterprises. He was present here to answer any additional questions he may have. We've been working with this property owner on this potential project since January. We've walked through the process, had two public neighborhood meetings onsite or near the site after sending out letters to those residents. First meeting was very well-attended. Over 20-some people were there, kind of going over the general concept of what they were looking for. During that meeting, a lot of good ideas, comments came out from the neighborhood. So, we've asked him to actually put some of those things together, do a concept plan, and show the neighborhood kind of what he was thinking in a little more detail, getting engineer involved so he could actually kind of quantify some of the issues at hand. And so, for this rezoning from RD1 to C2, they drafted up a design for this specific area that will tie in with the overall plan. So, the overall plan for this is then for the applicant, who also owns two pieces of land just to the west that abut the frontage road on Cliff Avenue, to combine those into one parcel, and then to do a redevelopment on that parcel where you at least have one or two businesses located there, which would be auto-related, mainly cleaning vehicles and things like that, possibly doing sales later on. So, this is kind of the engineered concept plan for that portion requesting rezoning right now. So, it's important to note that this is the whole lot shown right now. You can see a little bit that kind of, like a finger pointing to the east or to the right, is not changed, not added. The parking lot's on the bigger, larger west half of that, and then you can see it connects west further, and that's where the future development then would happen and connect at the same time with this going on there. The neighborhood concerns were brought up at the time, ranged, were very, very good concerns to bring up, and I think we've hopefully addressed most of those through this concept plan, showing that access wouldn't be allowed to go from the frontage road to Wayland. That was very important from staff perspective as well as a neighborhood perspective. We don't want commercial traffic on Wayland. That's a residential street. So, this delineates that you're not going to be able to physically drive back there anymore with that fencing. It's going to be also screening fencing. In addition to this one, there'll be buffer yards required along there to help kind of provide additional screening and things like that to the residential houses to the south, north, and east. There's a large drainage facility for stormwater, and so that should help the situation even as it exists today better than what it is out there today. So, it's designed, engineered to collect the water. It doesn't reduce the amount of water that goes out, but it does reduce, or extends the amount of time it takes for that water to leave. So, as it rains, it'll fill up, and then it'll slowly release that water out so that you don't get as much of a giant rush of water. Should be a longer expon of water. So, with that, I'll kind of let that be. This site is just under an acre, and it's one of those sites for us as staff where it's a tough one for us because there's no home run location in here. You go, is it better C2? Is it better as residential, and what kind of residential when it's this kind of site? So, you try to balance those items, and I think this, through the discussions we've had, hopefully, the neighborhood and the applicants really have overall come out better for both of them, and this way they kind of know what's going to go back there now instead of it sitting out there as a question mark.
Okay. Thanks, Albert. Commissioners, any questions for Albert? Okay, is the applicant here? Come up and state your name and address.
Dean Jasper, 6809 North 9th Avenue, Sioux Falls, and I'm with DND Enterprise.
Anything you'd like to tell us more about the project?
I think we've been very diligent on working with the neighborhood in the multiple meetings that Albert and myself have put together, and I think it's a benefit to the neighborhood because we have noticed, since we have been diligent about putting up lighting, cameras, be more focused on the local crime that happens in our area up there, we really kind of put a stop to it. So, I think this is a benefit not only to us, but the neighborhood to help control some of that also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. Sir, anyone from the audience that would like to address this item? Come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Bernie Schmidt, and I live at 1525 East 34th Street North, Sioux Falls. And I guess to start off with here, the neighborhood has a lot of concerns about runoff. We have neighbors to the east of this proposal that live in a virtual bowl. You go down to Highland Avenue between 29th Street North and 34th Street North, and west to this property, and east to Jessica Avenue, there is no outlet for runoff. A lot of people in my neighborhood has had a lot of problems with water seeping in through their basement floors, through their walls, and it's pretty extensive through that neighborhood. From what I understand, they plan on putting a pond in there, but that pond is only going to slow down the runoff. It isn't going to eliminate it. And the other problem is, is you're proposing to put in a hard-surface parking lot, which of course we would want because I live across from a junkyard, Insurance Auto Auction Incorporated, that is unregulated, that has dust that is uncontrolled and unbelievable. So, certainly, we would want the hard-surface lot, but that adds to more runoff for the people to the east. I was told by a city councilor that I probably shouldn't mention any of this issue because we have ditches and culverts in our neighborhood. We don't have the traditional storm sewer and collection system like that. So, when we were developed, we were developed to have gravel driveways, gravel parking areas, and a lot of places for soil to drain. The city's made people through the years to put in hard-surface parking areas, hard-surface driving lot, driving ways, driveways. They've increased the rooftops up there, and all this goes into our ditches and our culverts and is overwhelming us. So, unless you can come up with some kind of solution for that for us, I believe the people in Norton Acres doesn't, we don't believe that you have the infrastructure in our neighborhood to handle any more commercial activity. We had asked that this runoff be diverted to the west, to Cliff Avenue, where there's storm sewers and so on, and we were told that you're unable to change the flow, the natural flow of water. So, that leaves us, who live to the east, to put up with more runoff from another commercial activity that you folks are bringing to us that we don't want. Nobody in our neighborhood that I've talked to, and I talk to a lot of people every day, nobody, nobody wants this activity up there. They are tired of the junkyard I live across from in Insurance Auto Auction Incorporated, which you folks do nothing to control. We have no guarantees that any conditions you put on these people will be any different than the conditions you put on Insurance Auto Auction Incorporated. So, unless you can assure us that these things are going to be met, we don't have a lot of faith in your integrity. And I hate to put it to you that way, but that's the way this neighborhood feels because nobody seems to want to listen to our runoff issues and the other issues in Norton Acres. So, do you have any questions for me? I see I'm down to about 40 seconds.
Commissioners, any questions?
Can you give me any assurances? You can't because you tried to give me assurances with Insurance Auto Auction Incorporated. We had a condition on their conditional use permit, and you folks have failed us. I assume you're going to fail us again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address, in the audience, that would like to address this item?
Dave Underberg. I live at 1420, East 29th Street North. I went to that last meeting. He had up at his, their shop, and at the time then, I want to see how they're going to do it. They said they were going to put three houses along Wayland Avenue. At that meeting, he says they're going to put three, three different houses on three lots right behind their place where they're planning on putting these cars. How are they going to control water going into those houses? I live, I mean, I, like he said, there is nobody in Norton Acres that wants this place in there. Nobody. I've been in Norton Acres for 40-some years, and we liked it with a residential deal like we have. Like he says, the water runoff, I've had water in my basement different times, even where I live. We don't need more water up there. And then he's talking about putting a car, or a washout area for washing cars and that in there. There's going to be that much more water and a body shop. So, how are we going to do this? I mean, I'm completely against it, and I'm sure anybody from Norton Acres would agree with me. Thank you.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Either the petitioner or Albert want to come up and talk on those items?
Yeah, so I could speak a little bit to some of the concerns brought up as well. So, the first and foremost one we'll talk about is rezoning request C2. Wouldn't allow for the junkyard from our zoning regulations. That would have to go to an I1 or I2 usage so you can't have inoperable vehicles back there in those kind of situations. So, hopefully that should, through our zoning and our permitting process, take care of those items and those concerns. Further water flow aspects of it, very understandable on those items. The best that we can do is engineer the area to control the water to not go off any further than pre-development runoff. Like they commented on, changing the runoff direction for individual property owners is not a feasible option to go with. You'd have to have a whole system-wide approach, and probably as a city project, do that aspect. At this time, that's not in our plans for this area, as far as I'm aware in engineering. So, when you do an individual site like this, you try to develop the sites so that it's minimally impactful to those. The petitioner has commented that, and again, the reason for the rezoning of a portion of this, I'll zoom over here, is that the Wayland Avenue, street frontage, would remain RD1, and then so you could do residential homes along that aspect to help buffer that as well. So, any homes built to that aspect, I would suggest then that at that time, when they build, they'll figure out what the groundwater is associated with that building site and build accordingly to that. We have sites in town that, depending on where they're at, for the conditions that they're building at the time they're building, they'll do a full basement, half basement, no basement kind of situations. So...
Okay. So, there's actually an engineer that would be looking at that for the water?
Yeah. So, like, this is, for instance, this plan you see here from Sayer, they engineered that pond, but when it goes through, that'll then be reviewed by our drainage engineer team as well.
Commissioners, any questions for Albert?
Mr. Chair, so Albert, what you're telling us, just to clarify, is that once this pond is properly designed and then verified by the city, those properties to the east or any other direction that are pre-existing would not see any additional water come across that property line when this is properly designed. Is that what you're saying?
That's the short of it. It should be designed in a way that there's no excess flow of water at an immediate time. Again, the duration would go out with more previous area, but the amount shouldn't go up.
So, that's absolutely what I'd want to see, where I am neighbor, so it's good to hear that that process continues to be pretty thorough in that design. Okay, good to hear.
Mr. Chair, Adam, we're looking at this, I think, the same way. It refers to an improvement in terms of reducing the excess runoff during storms based on improvements that would be made. Is that essentially what you're representing in this diagram, that that will provide for that to be the case?
Yeah, this pond is designed for the amount of hard-surfacing and those things going through this site to hold back that area, that water, that improvement, that paving.
Thanks, Albert.
Thank you.
All right. I'll look for a commission action.
Move to approve. Nyberg.
Second. Santos.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I did like to address the pond a little bit. I look at it, and I see that engineering has approved it, and it sounds like they're on board, and it sounds like they're going to be working with the petitioner to make sure that that's done properly and it alleviates some of the concerns of the neighborhood. You know, I'm not an engineer and not an expert on water runoff, but when I look at it, I think the proposed pond certainly provides a benefit, not a detriment, and I think I would urge people from, the workers over at the city of Sioux Falls, to work with the neighbors on some of the culvert issues and some of the other drainage issues, more broadly speaking, for the neighborhood. I don't necessarily think that the changes to this property are going to cause a detriment in terms of water runoff.
Sorry, we've cut off public testimony. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Denise, can you read the next agenda on the regular item, regular agenda?
Item 5B, petition, 10359, 2019, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District located at 4801 East Linden Lane and 605 South Gordon Drive.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Ryan Tisdale. The owner is Jerry Berg. The applicant is proposing to rezone roughly .51 acres from the RS Single Family Residential District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District. As you can see kind of by this plan here, the majority of Track 1 is already zoned commercial. There's a couple of small little leftover parcels and a vacated, or one leftover parcel and a vacated alley that is still zoned RS. And then the applicant is looking at rezoning roughly a 40-foot wide portion of Track 2, the track to the south, to C2 also. And then what the applicant would propose to do is take that 40 feet from Track 2, combine it with Track 1, that's also, will be all zoned commercial, and construct a retail strip center on the site. The proposed retail strip center will be required, those 10-foot front yard setbacks off of Gordon Drive and East Arrowhead Parkway. Parking would be calculated as one for every 200 square feet. With this concept plan, that's roughly 95 parking spaces. This plan does indicate roughly 106 parking spaces, so they are exceeding the requirement. They also be, would be required to do a level-C buffer yard along the south property line and the east property line, where they're adjacent to single-family. That buffer yard would include a 30-foot setback, a four-foot berm or six-foot fence, and 40 units of landscaping for every 100 lineal feet. We also did, the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting, which was attended by staff. Some of the neighbors' main concerns is mostly to do with traffic. There's some traffic problems out in that area with the redesign of Arrowhead Parkway, specifically not turning Hillview into not a full intersection anymore. You're not allowed to turn left. It's a median, so it's a right-in, right-out only. And then additional traffic is then coming down Linden Lane to the west to Gordon, to go to the stoplight to turn left. So, that's causing a little bit of traffic issues at the intersection of Gordon and Arrowhead Parkway. Future plans, I believe, are, you know, down the line, if this would ever redevelop the places on Linden Lane, that would actually go away, so that should help alleviate a lot of those traffic problems. Then people leaving the Aldi store, they would have to go over to Foss Avenue, which is their first full intersection, which would be a lighted intersection. The proposed C2 commercial zoning does meet the designation of the suburban strip within the Shakes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. The suburban strip land uses include C2 commercial zoning and are located on large, high-traffic streets. As if anybody's been out to East Arrowhead Parkway, that's now a six-lane road with lots of volume of traffic. Further, the majority of Track 1 is already zoned C2, as I had indicated before, and they're only looking to do roughly a 40-foot wide portion of Track 2. And then the remainder of Track 2 would still be zoned RS. Single family would only allow single-family use. That would help it buffer and fit in better with the existing residential neighborhood. And finally, that level-C buffer yard that I had discussed earlier should help provide some transitions to the existing single-family neighborhood and alleviate some of the incompatibilities. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shakes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, and the required level-C buffer yard should help alleviate any incompatibilities between the proposed retail strip center and then the existing single-family to the south and east, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Commissioners, any questions for Jason?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Jason, it looks like what is being proposed for that 40-foot strip is essentially a buffer yard. Is that how you would see it?
Yep, yep. Great, great observation there, John. Yep, about, out of the 40-foot strip on that Track 2, about 30, at least 30 of it will be the required buffer yard. So, it'll be open space with either of the berm or fence and a bunch of landscaping there. So...
Okay, thank you.
Jason, I know a couple, a year or two ago, or a year or two ago, we had something just right down the street. Is this in line with how far that creeped in in the neighborhood?
Yeah, as we had rezoned the Aldi lot that was close to Foss Avenue and that development that was over there, this is a similar creep within the neighborhood, and that's one of the reasons why staff wasn't necessarily opposed to kind of getting some additional commercial in only that 40-foot. We were against them rezoning the whole Track 2. That was too much creep. But to give them that 40 extra feet, that kind of gives them that 300-foot, you know, what they're looking for, that usually is what a commercial lot is, to be able to develop into a strip center. So...
Any other questions for Jason? Thanks, Jason. Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Tisdale, 2571 Southwest Lake Drive.
Anything else you'd like to tell us about the project at all?
Nope. Jason covered it well, and good point is, a majority of, over half of what's being rezoned will be essentially grass, open space, landscaping. Neighborhood meeting was well-attended. There were probably 20 or more people there. Lot of traffic concerns, lot of things that were brought up in the meeting, I felt were extremely valid, but didn't necessarily have anything to do with this particular project, just general traffic comments down Linden Lane as, you know, as there's limited access on Arrowhead Parkway versus a year ago. That's created a little bit more traffic to get to those stoplights to be able to take a left to head west. Certainly growing pains in an existing neighborhood along a busy stretch. This is Highway 42. It's the number-one east-west corridor in the city, so definitely designed to carry a lot of traffic, and commercial, a commercial strip center along there seems pretty logical. And, you know, it was a well-attended meeting with good comments from the, from the neighbors.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Ryan?
Has there been a review for retention of water and some of the drain things that you're considering?
It'll have to meet all the city engineering standards. As we go into final design, we'll, we'll have to go through, through that exercise with the city. The site plan is, you know, this is probably pretty representative of what it would be. My understanding is we're not approving a site plan, per se, as much as the zoning right now, but we'd certainly work with the, work with the neighbors and the city to put together a plan that's not a hindrance to anyone.
Good to know that conversation's going on. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Ryan.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this item? If you would state your name and address, please?
Hey, I'm Delkeyhausen. I live at 804 South Gordon, which is half a block south. I do work in city engineering, so I can tell you offhand that you've got over two acres there, so you're going to have to have like a BMP on-site, automatically over an acre. And with almost two acres there, you're going to have to have underground storage if you can't fit a BMP on your property. So that might be your, answering your BMP question. We do have some traffic issues. It's okay. And I think we had some issues. How are we going to be turning out there? They don't really show what the street will have to change to reflect this kind of commercial creep. So I have to put in curb and gutter, sidewalk, that kind of stuff. So, I don't know, those, that's all I had, I guess.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to address this item? State your name and address, please.
I'm Jean Fuller, and we live at 705 South Gordon Drive. Been there close to 50 years. And most of the neighbors that are here have been there about that long. Our concern is to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. It's all trees. It's a slow, kind of sleepy little neighborhood. We've had a big change. I call Gordon Drive now an on-ramp to Walmart, because everybody south of us, because those streets aren't connected over, are coming down to get to Walmart. So we have some concerns about traffic and 109 more parking spots and what's going to, you know, what's going to come down at us. And so that's our real concern, again, about creep into our neighborhood. It's happened a little bit, and we're just here to kind of stand up for what we need. The other thing is, as that man from Norton Acres was talking, I thought of this. We are grandfathered in, we've been there forever. When we moved in, it was a gravel road. We didn't have sewer, water, any of that. And so we paid for all that to come in, but we do not have storm drainage. We are also, you know, ditches and drainage that way. And my concern is, is if you, you know, build that up down there, then the water that's coming down, you know, normally flows straight out, could end up with a problem. And a lot of people in our neighborhood this year did end up with, you know, water in their basement, which is about 90% of the city, I know. But those are some of our, you know, serious concerns. I would like to tell you that Jason came out, walked the property with us, and did a great job today helping us understand what's going on in the buffer zone and all that. And it seems like it'll work pretty well as long as everybody is honest and forthright about following the rules and the things they say they're going to do. Otherwise, I don't know if other people have comments, but there's a lot of people here and a lot of concern. The other thing is, is that one place is going to buffer right up to Marvel Hanson's home, and she's been there over 60 years. And, you know, that's, we just need to be careful of our neighbors and, you know, what's going to look good for them. Thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Ma'am?
Yeah?
I just, I don't really have a con, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I don't really have a question, but I do appreciate you coming up and the neighbors coming up. You do, I am familiar with your neighborhood. It is a beautiful neighborhood. You guys keep a great job of keeping it up and it's good. And I think that the concerns that you have are similar to the concerns of the neighborhood on Minnesota Avenue, you know, especially when the Billion lot came about and that creep. And so that, when we talk as commissioners, we're aware of that, too. But I appreciate you coming out on July 3rd to stand up for your neighborhood.
We did gripe, gripe about that a little bit, but.
Yeah, we did, too.
Thank you. It's lake time, guys.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to address the commission on this item? If not, I will look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve?
Second, Irvin.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, first of all, it makes some logical sense to me to add 40 feet, mostly for buffer yard purposes. I'm glad to see that there was some good conversation back and forth between the property owner and the city and the neighborhood to try to get a reasonable request. That whole Track 2, if that would have been the request, that was clearly a huge creep and I think I would have been opposed to that. But this seems like a reasonable resolution to still give the property owners some rights to be able to develop that into something that is workable for what has become kind of the commercial strip standard anymore. And it still gives them some drive-up capabilities, some other things that, as an architect, I can see why they need the depth that they're requiring or asking for. And so to me, this makes a lot of sense and it's a good use for that commercial site. And so I'm in support.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, the comments from the public agencies and infrastructure entities go to the point of making sure that things are built according to standards and those standards are adhered to with regards to drainage and traffics, which I hope would add confidence to the neighborhood with regards to this project.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, well, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Denise, can you read the next item?
Item 5C, petition 10487, 2019, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment located within 500 feet of sensitive land use located at 1312 West 12th Street.
Good evening, Commissioner. Adam Roach, Planning and Development Services. The applicant has decided to defer this item this evening. At our request, we asked him to host a neighborhood meeting and outline his business plan and security management plan and things of that nature with the neighborhood to alleviate some of their concerns. So we're going to defer that.
Do you want us to defer to the next meeting or?
Yes.
Which is, what date is the next meeting?
August 7th.
7th, thank you. Commissioners, I'll look for action.
Move to defer to August 7th.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to defer this item to August 7th? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? It is deferred. Denise, can you read the next item?
Item 5D, petition 10515, 2019, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment located within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 5503 North Cliff Avenue.
Good evening. Adam Roach, again. This is a conditional use permit for a casino C store on North Cliff there and E64th Street. The applicant is Belay. I don't want to butcher his name. Abibi. Huh? I'm sorry, Bella Abibi. The general location is 53, um, 5503 North Cliff Avenue. In the concept plan that was submitted, there were a couple challenges with it. It does not indicate setbacks from the property line. It wasn't engineered to, you know, it wasn't to scale. The new addition would require a 10-foot yard setback off of E64th Street and South Cliff Avenue, which wasn't indicated. The parking is required at one space for every 200 square feet, for a total of 15 parking spaces that are required. The concept plan indicates 39, but it doesn't meet our engineering and design standards. And then again, all parking spaces and access to must be paved and there's a lot of gravel on-site. And the next. There we go. So if you see on the northwest side there, it is gravel. In terms of the buffer yard in the concept plan, if the proposed addition is more than 20% of the building site, a level-C buffer yard would be required along the north and west property lines. As indicated in your staff report, those are single-family homes. This buffer yard includes a 30-foot setback, a four-foot berm or a six-foot fence, and 40 units of landscaping per 100 lineal feet. The proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment presents a conflict amongst existing land uses in the immediate area. Is it about single-family homes, again, to the north and the west? Although the majority of North Cliff Avenue has retail uses, the nature of the area north of I-90 and west of North Cliff is predominantly residential, single-family residential. After further review, staff has significant concerns with the ability to provide buffer requirements as per 160.616 and the required level-C buffer yard. Without the buffer yard and paved parking, staff feels the applicant is not alleviating some of the incompatibilities with the land uses adjacent to it. So staff recommends denial of the conditional use permit due to the conflicting land uses and the applicant's shortcomings in addressing the conditional use permit requirements outlined in Section 160.616 of the Shape Placing Zoning Ordinance. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Adam?
Is it hot in here?
It's really hot. No questions? Thanks, Adam. Is the applicant here? Can you give us your name and address?
Hi, commissioners, my name is Belay, B-E-L-A-Y. That's the name, A-B-E-B-E. My business address, 631 West 11th Street, C4s.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the project and then address some of the issues that the staff has concerns on?
Yeah, okay. I have a convenience store here in downtown Mercato.
Okay.
I want to transfer to old gas station place, that is a C2 commercial place. It was used to sell any commercial service. I mean, the building is zoned C2, so practically I want to transfer this business to that area. That is the main thing.
Okay.
And I have a vision to develop the area. I mean, I can, I will try to create a small recreation centers. I mean, there is, on that location, there is a shield. I mean, I can redesign to have the neighbors or the others people pass by, because it is, the location is located right on the right side, I-19, and north of the cliff. So there is a lot of pass-by people. I'm trying to attract them to sit down. I would create outside seating also. So just the main point is to transfer the C store to the C store location once it was, and to establish and to add it up, a casino also together. So that is a plan I put there.
So just to address some of the concerns that the staff has, the gravel part, is that, is that going to be something that you would put cement there or hard surface?
If the commissioners let me to do, there's, we have enough space on the backside, on the right side also. There is, we're going to make asphalt altogether. So we're going to expand. We have a plan.
Okay. And then they talked about a buffer yard. Are you open to a buffer yard or a fence or?
There is a fence. Practically, I want just to tell you, I'm a family. I know what the family don't like. I have a family. I have, I know what the family's like. I know what they don't like. So I will keep the neighbors behind. Practically, the building is facing on the this side. The neighbors, they face the other side. We have common backyard, even we don't see each other. Even so, the situation is that I'm going to put, well, fence, nobody disturb it, and I'll take care. Even here, where I run the business, I have a liquor license for 15 years with zero violation. So I know how to do, and my record shows how I can handle it. So there is no doubt, I'll take care for the neighborhoods.
Okay. And then they talked about setbacks, 10-foot setbacks. Are you going to have any?
I'll meet all requirements.
Okay. And then parking, do you have like a?
Right now, we have around 39 parking, but still we have a potential landers. We're going to make asphalt, we're going to make enough parking lots to the business. That's not a problem.
And do you have, I mean, do you have any like plans of how you're going to lay out the parking? Because that's going to be a lot of parking for that small space, is why I'm asking that.
What I talked to the engineers, they told me this part we have, it is almost from 70, 80 cars can handle it. We have enough spot.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I can appreciate the way that you talked about having a fence on that north and west side. However, that doesn't actually meet the requirement to have a 30-foot setback, and I think that remains probably the biggest concern of mine. I really don't see space here, just looking at the space between the building and the property line. Just my gut says that's probably about 40 feet now, and to retain a driveway along that side and still have a buffer yard, it looks like a physical impossibility at my first glance. So I think those requirements on this particular property look to be a challenge to me.
So I'll meet the requirement. I'm going to build a fence.
I understand that. But there's required to be a 30-foot setback, a buffer yard, if you will, and it looks like you only have about 40 feet between the building and the property line. So to get a driveway there, too, and still get the buffer yard, I think it looks to be a challenge, and I don't see anything in the submitted documents that convince me otherwise. So I think that's kind of my initial look at it, anyway.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Anything else for us?
Just, I will thank you for your time and patience and for giving me this chance to explain to you. But positively, that place really, it is used to be a commercial area. It is C2. And the neighbors, really, we touch backyard, but there is no even visual contact, and they have their own entrance. It has nothing to do with that business. That is what I mean. And I wish to transfer the ones, the Mercato business from very, even for city. I mean, to transfer Mercato from heart area to very remote area is good, because too much, too much, everything in downtown area. So that is really good for even city. Yeah. And for me also, I would go less, very decent area, you know what I mean? That's my plan.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? And state your name and address for the record.
I'm his wife, so I'm going to ask you more questions, if I may.
Okay.
My name is Mascaram Alamu, Mascaram Alamu Seifu. Question is, you are asking about a buffer. What were you asking about? Is there a distance we have to have?
Yes. According to the rules of shaped places, there's a required buffer yard, meaning a space that just has landscaping and berms and/or fences that protect the neighbors. And right now, it doesn't look like there's enough clearance to be able to do that and still have paving around the backside of the building, as indicated.
Okay, so we are supposed to have that between us and the neighbors, correct?
Correct. On both the west side and the north side.
So what's, what's the distance required, again?
I think this is probably the inappropriate place to have a detailed discussion about the design, but I'm sure that the city would love to continue to work with you and figure out a way to make a compliant plan.
I think what I, my head's trying to get around this is, maybe it's something where we defer this to next month and let you guys have the appropriate time to talk with the city staff. I know they haven't been able to communicate with you guys and get a set plan set up. So if we could, maybe if you guys are okay with it, defer it to next month, because if it is denied, I believe it's, what, six months before you can apply again? Is that right, city staff? So I would rather us defer it. So I would rather us defer it and have you work with the city and then come back to us next month, August seventh. And that way, we can have a game plan, and you guys can get some stuff figured out with the city so that we can all be on board and?
Yeah, we were not told about this distance, so that's why. Thank you.
So if you could, if you guys could chat with these guys and exchange information, that way they can get ahold of you and get something set up to talk with you. But I think that's probably the best plan of action right now, because I wouldn't want to defer it, and then you have to wait six months before you can come back in front of us, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we had another audience member that wanted to speak to it. It might be appropriate since they've come to tonight's meeting to let them still make that comment, and then that may be part of the input needed for the deferral reapplication, if you will.
Agree with that. You come up, sir. Say your name and address for the record.
Ken Kirby, fifty five oh five North Cliff. I'm just north of the, of the building that we're proposing here. My biggest problem is they're gonna asphalt that, well, not my biggest one, they're gonna asphalt that, they're gonna have to raise it up because previous owners moving snow to the north, of course, have dug that gravel down where I'm getting all the water. It's, it used to drain to the south, now it drains to the north for the, on the gravel portion of it. As far as garbage goes, that's why I got a fence up to stop it. Because when they, there was a, previously, there was a convenience store there, and we just had a mess, so I put a fence up to stop the garbage. And another app is, we've got grandchildren and great grandchildren ages two to five and hopefully more, but right now, we got three, and yeah, that's, that's my concern right there with them is having a beer joint right next to my children or grandchildren. Is that everything? I think that's everything.
Commissioners, any questions?
There's another gentleman that's gonna wanna talk to you.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
David Behrens, I live at fifty four twelve North French Avenue. I'm in concerned about this property. I've lived at, at house since, before the interstate opened. The house, that land has been raised since I've lived there, five feet, and over the years, it's dropped about a foot and a half in property level. I don't, I'm not in favor of having that there because of other previous areas have had trouble with what goes on in those places. If the person would've came around and knocked on our door and said, this is what I'd like to do, or what I have in mind wanting to do, we never seen anybody come to our door at all. So that's, you know, give us an idea as what you want to do. We wanna see development too, but we also want respect, and that was, that's the big thing. And I, and that's why I'm here for, is to see if you could help us get respected with our property. Also, like he said, that we, the previous owner that had the store open, there was a lot of garbage flying in the air. I mean, we've all picked up trash religiously, and some people put up fences, some people put up bushes or trees or something just to kinda slow it down so it wouldn't go into their property. So it is a nuisance, and it was a problem. So, but I would like to see something different done with that piece of property, rather than see it sit empty. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good input.
Thank you, sir. State your name and address for record, please.
Hello, we're twenty nine seventeen East twelve State Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm resident of City of Sioux Falls for forty-two years. I should be brought some firecracker with me today, but tomorrow July fourth. I wanna thank you guys to allow me speak. I work with the many ethnic community when they try to build their life for a better, for a future for their kids. And Mr. Bela, I know him very long time ago, and I know I involved with him when he have eleven Street West, some difficulty, and he did everything to follow up the rule and regulation of City Hall. And matter of fact, in the end of it, unanimously, all the city council vote for him to stay where he is and done everything. And a couple of week ago, I went to the place over there with him, and I look in the building, and I respectfully agree with you for the thirty feet, and at the same time, respect the neighbors' concern. One thing isn't there is the, all three houses close to the building, their backyard to the building, another front yard, when people come in and going, they see and privacy and those kind of issue. And at the same time, I discussed with Mr. Bela about the fencing, we have to put a higher fence in there, and he hundred percent agree with that, to raise it up to whatever city require, be six feet, eight feet, and a privacy. Matter of fact, I requested, I say sometime those fence, they put those green leaf between it to give more privacy to other sides. So my, 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 my issue here, I want you guys to, and I appreciate you said, to work with the city group to make sure. I know thirty feet buffer take a lot of parking space away, but believe me, in the front of building is a lot of space in there for a parking lot, and at the same time, is no way, I guarantee you, no way, that business gonna have more than five, six car over there because it just, that's always is people come in, buy some groceries and going out or come in, two, three people play the license approved for a casino and other stuff. So one thing I guarantee you guys, as a commissioner, I work with them, and I'm gonna meet with them over and over and tell all the requirement to satisfy the neighborhood and satisfy city planning to go forward this, because those people, they come to this country by the rule of law, and they work very hard night and day to build something for themselves. And I'm very proud to know him, and he done that for many, many years. So with that, I'm gonna thank you guys, and if any questions, I answer, but I guarantee you personally, I gonna be in his back to make sure he follow every rule and regulation of City of Sioux Falls if you guys approve of it.
Thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Any commissioners, any questions?
Good comments.
Thank you. Seeing no more, I'll look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for city staff. I'd just like to ask you broadly to speak again about how much you guys have been working with the applicant so far and how long of a process it's been for you guys already to work with them up until this point.
Sure. Do you wanna provide a historical context?
Great question, Eric. I appreciate you asking it. I have personally met with the applicant at least two or three times at the counter prior to him even submitting the conditional use. We've expressed concerns from the beginning, specifically city concerns with the location. Second, I mean, we've seen these, you as a planning commissioner, have seen some of these gas stations redevelop into casinos recently. That's always one of our biggest concerns, is the parking goes from one to three hundred to one to two hundred. To be able to get that amount of parking on some of these is very difficult. We express those concerns to the applicant. We also strongly suggested him to have a neighborhood meeting out here because we knew the neighbors were gonna have concerns. So we've done a majority of all of that stuff. I believe the applicant then provided us with that site plan that didn't really address any of those concerns, and he didn't, or I don't know, you'd have to ask him why he, why he did not have a neighborhood meeting out there. But those are things that we, through us doing these casinos, I mean, we've seen them before, we strongly suggest people to have neighborhood meetings. It's not a requirement. We strongly suggest that we try and work with them prior to coming to these meetings. Sometimes we either don't get through or, for some reason, they do not wanna provide that information, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to defer this item for one month to August seventh to allow the applicant and anyone who's willing to assist him in getting a plan that is a little more concrete and in, with city support as well as neighborhood support.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to defer to August seventh, next month? Any comments, discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? It's deferred. Denise, can you read the, the next item?
Item five E, petition one zero four eight nine, twenty nineteen, preliminary subdivision plan for Cloverleaf Business Park Edition located east of North Marion Road and south I ninety.
Albert Schmidt, Planning and Development Services. Staff has asked the applicant, and applicant has agreed to request a deferral on this one to the August seventh meeting as well.
It's gonna be a busy meeting.
Hopefully warmer. Hopefully cooler in here.
Since there's no one in the audience, I'll look for commissioners to make a motion.
Motion to approve deferral of this item to the August seventh meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to defer this to the August seventh meeting? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? It's deferred.
Item five F, petition one zero five zero three, two zero one nine, preliminary subdivision plan for Ackerson Edition located south of East eighty-fifth Street and east of South Minnesota Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Thank you.
Again, staff has talked and discussed with the applicant owner about this one and asked for a deferral. They have agreed that they will ask for a deferral, so we're requesting a deferral to the August seventh meeting for this one so that we can work through some of the design aspects of this item.
Seeing no one in the audience, I'll look for commission action.
I move to defer five F to the August seventh meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to defer this to the August seventh meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Deferred till the next meeting.
Item five G, petition, resolution amending the Shape Sioux Falls twenty forty comprehensive plan.
Good evening, Sam Trabillcock, City of Sioux Falls Planning Office. Certainly, we talked about this at briefing, but I wanted to, as long as about a month ago, give you a little bit of an update, a refresher, but the Sioux Falls, Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan is one of the most important guiding documents the city has, and certainly is very important to our office and to Planning Commission. So what I'm asking for your recommendation tonight is really the update of five different maps that are within that Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. So I'll take you through those fairly quickly, and then I'll take your questions. So what we're doing to begin with is we're updating four of our tier maps, our growth tier maps, that really look at identifying the timing of development, when that'll occur. And again, these maps are being updated because it's really important that we look at this document from time to time to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the community, the development community, the citizens. And as we were looking at this, at these maps, it was really important that we noticed that it was time to do so based upon our infrastructure needs and our development needs. So we start with the sanitary sewer availability map, and what we're doing on this map was the one on the left is the map that's current, the one that's on the right is the one that's proposed. So we've identified some areas that you can see with those circles that we're, we're showing where there are the main changes of part of the documents or part of this map. So the main thing to look at this map is, one of the things that we're adding is a growth area kind of along that County one oh six area, that T interchange area on the south side. We're adding some growth area, some sanitary sewer availability area that wasn't, that isn't currently in the plan, so that's important to note. The rest of it is, is updating the timing of the development. Some of it's going a little more into the recent, it's blue, it's within the next five years. So as we're updating it, of course, we're getting closer to that five-year period, and that's the period in which we would have CIP dollars invested into that area. And, and, and like, like I mentioned, this is for the sanitary sewer availability map. The next map is for our water and roads. Water and roads are together because they tend to go into the same location. So again, you can see the map on, on the left is existing, the map on the right is the, the proposed, and we're identifying the areas where we're updating. And you can kinda see those, and hopefully you've gotten a chance to take a look at that, where we're updating some of those, those facilities. Again, the blue is within the five-year period, green is within five to fifteen years, and orange is within that fifteen to twenty-five year period on, on all of these maps. This is, this is showing the public facilities and proposed ponds. This one is probably the hardest one to read, and I think after briefing, we gave you the, the link to the website so that you could look at this more closely, but what this does and these maps do is identify the future libraries, the fire stations, the detention ponds, the drainage study areas, the schools. And so again, we're trying to identify those and update that as, to make sure that those are done in concert with these new tier areas that we're, we're identifying and updating. The last map really brings all those things together to identify to the public where these areas will be available for development over the time periods I mentioned before, the blue being within the next five years, the green within the five to fifteen years, and then the orange within the fifteen to twenty-five years. Again, you can kinda see some of the differences. We've kinda highlighted these with some of the areas with these, with these lines here to give you an idea what has changed. And most of it, again, is, is updating, but the main change that updated was that area to the south along that T interchange or that County one oh six line there and to the north where we're actually adding in some growth area. One other map that was also added, as you're, you're also adding some growth area and making some changes, we wanna update our future land use map. So again, just to refresh for Planning Commission and the public with some of these circles me on the map, there are employment centers, whether or not they're commercial employment centers, business parks or industrial areas. And again, here's our, on the left is our existing future land use map, and the map to the right is our proposed future land use map. Many of the changes, again, are in the south, as we added some employment centers to that new growth area. And then just a few other additions, there was a little bit of growth area we were adding to the west. You'll see that straight to the west along High Twelve Street, and then one employment center kind of in the northeast area as a business park. Beyond that, I think it's just important to note the requirements for the public. Planning Commission public hearing was, was, is here tonight, and then we'll do this again at city council. We're gonna do it in August. I think the resolution you see in here says July twelve, sixteenth, it's gonna be on, in August. We also sent some notices out to the public as we talked to city council about this, they wanted some notices especially sent to the areas that we were adding in, in, in growth area on that, along that County one oh six line. No responses have been received to this date, though. With that, though, I would take any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, move approval?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Say we're a growing city. All those in?
Looks very well considered as you look at it overall.
Agree with that.
More blue.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes.
Item six, public input on non-agenda items.
Public input, at this time, we will allow anyone from the public to address the commission on non-agenda items. You're allowed up to five minutes. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Move for adjournment.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Thank you all for coming, I know it's July 3rd, so appreciate you coming. All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? We adjourn. Thank you, Sioux Falls.
Good.